We'll start with our meeting. We have Pastor Darren Levy here from the Hefe community. I don't see him in this room right now, so I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Harris what she gives out for her, and we're gonna call our player for Ms. Patricia Lane.
Thank you, Lord. Lord, I thank you this afternoon. You've been so good and you've been so kind, oh God. We lift you up in this place, oh God. We bless your name in here, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. You've been so good and you've been so kind, oh God. Look on each and every one of these council members as they make decisions for this city, oh God. As we lift our mayor up, oh God, you cover him with your blood, lift him with your love, oh God, wrap him in your mercy, oh God. Let this city continue to go forward, oh God. Bless our farmers, bless our police department, oh God. Cover our city with your blood, oh Lord, wrap it in your mercy, oh God. Let your spirit dwell here, oh God. Let this be a bloodily-loved state, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you right now, oh God, for what you're doing, what you're gonna do, and what you have done. We bless your name in here, oh God. We bless your name in here, oh God, and we lift you up, oh God. Let your mercy dwell in here, let your love dwell in here. Lord, you wrap us tight, oh God, for one can't fall without the other one. Give us that love that runs from heart to heart and breast to breast. We give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor and we give you praise, oh God. We lift you up in this meeting, oh God. You touch each and every one of us, oh God, in the name of Jesus. And we thank you right now, God. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Did y'all face the flag? Yeah, I mean.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the brother who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you go down? Call that roll for me, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor McClendon.
President.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Charlie Suter. Counselor Bruce.
Here.
Counselor Kat.
Here.
Counselor Kroom.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
Counselor Wheeze.
Here.
We have ten out of ten.
We got a ten out of ten, President. We got a quorum. We had no bid openings, so we're gonna move down to our minutes. Were there any additional corrections to both sets of minutes?
Make a motion to approve or submit it.
I guess, on a paper A? Opposed? All right. We're gonna go to old business. Ms. City Attorney?
This is the second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 514 South Fourth, permitting a vehicle repair shop in a I-1C light industrial core zoning district.
This read for the second time. We'd be back on the agenda in a couple of weeks. I understand there's possibly a couple of questions, so we'll have a couple of weeks that you all can get that worked out or just get the clarity that you need. I'm gonna go to new business, and then I'll ask Councilwoman Mohammed.
We asked an O-1 be read by Title Lonely, please.
I get a second?
Second.
On a paper A?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's a resolution certifying the condemnation and removal of houses, buildings, and/or residential structures constituting a nuisance within the city of West Memphis corporate limits.
Hearing that read, actually, I wanna get a motion in second to make an amendment, actually, a removal. We have 1605 East Barn Avenue, Mr. Butler property, and 728 South 10th Street, Mr. Le Bates property. I want to have that removed as well as 520 South 11th Street. If we can get that moved, just until we can find the verification of the owner, because we just got some information that may be a new owner, so any information that been going to the house possibly been going to the wrong owner, so we wanna make sure that we get that information to the right owner, so if they wanna make some improvement, they could...
So which address is this for?
520 South 11th Street.
Is there another one, Mayor McClendon?
Yes, the other one is 1605 East Barn Avenue, and the second one is 728 South 10th Street.
You need a motion, Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we, the following addresses be removed from the condemnation list?
Yes, ma'am. I get a second?
Second.
On a paper A?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so those three addresses are moved in the 520, just until we can find the verification, so that would be up to that time. Now, we hear the motion read. May I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
On a paper A?
Aye.
Opposed? May I get a resolution number?
If I may, I'm assuming we're gonna need to spin the rules place on a second reading?
Resolutions.
O-1.
It's supposed to be R.
O-1, yeah.
Moving ahead, Mayor, resolution number 2285.
2285?
Yes, sir.
That number's 2285. I'm actually hearing on social media guys that they can't hear Joe and Nick. I'm kinda getting people saying they can't hear us. All right, we're gonna move forward. I had no permission request. Community reports, police?
Yes, sir. I have two synopses for the police department. First of all, we had a special call meeting on Tuesday, June 27th. We talked about purchasing two 2023 Dodge Charger Pursuit vans that was passed. Then we talked about cameras and the policy or the directive that went along with the cameras that passed and was presented on to the city council meeting. And then this past Monday, July 3rd, we had a meeting. We were so thankful to have our police chief and Queen Inspector with us. There was really no old business, no new business, but the commissioners...
You can't hear me, you're there, Lisa. You still can't hear me?
I have my mic on. Can you hear me now?
Closer to me.
Closer?
No, he can't hear you right here.
You can't hear me right here?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Is that better? You need me to start over? We had a special call meeting, special call police meeting on Tuesday, June 27th. That meeting was to pass, I think it's two Dodge Charger Pursuit sedan V8 vehicles purchased through state and federal seizure monies from, and nothing would come out of the general fund. We also talked about the cameras. Mayor McClendon stated that the installation and operation of the police cameras were not going to affect until September 1st, 2023, instead of the projected date of July 1st. The mayor said the city attorney, Michael Stevenson, Chief Campbell, and Assistant Chief Bradley, Captain Johnson, and the upper brass met to discuss the following technicalities regarding the use of the cameras. Number one, Sergeant Garrett will continue to do the FOI request. B, redaction of images were discussed. Number C, hiring a crime analyst to focus strictly on redaction. D, Captain Johnson will order two new computers specifically for the use of the cameras and redaction. E, additional training and education for new and young officers will be needed in order to not have any unnecessary complaints launched against them. Captain Johnson stated that a $1,000 grant was received from the state for the cameras and the computers will be funded through this grant, and two computers will cost about $8,000 each and will not cost the city any money. The purpose of the directive is to guide officers and supervisors in the proper use and maintenance of body-worn videos. Much discussion by Counselor Kat regarding the directives, especially Item C, under procedure, he had a lot of concerns regarding that. And we also stated that if we need to come back and amend something, then we can do it, as long as it does not interfere with police policy. That's basically left up to them. For more information regarding the long discussion on directives, please request an audio tape from the city clerk's office, and she'll be glad to let you hear it or download it to you. Counselor Garrick Bruce requested that Mayor McClendon have Chief Campbell attend the police commission meeting to answer questions that only the chief can answer. After much discussion, it was moved in second that both items, the purchase of the 2023 Dodge Charger Pursuit sedan and for, from the state, from, I'm sorry, from the Arkansas State Vehicle Contract for $34,700 plus $950 for an installed havoc console for a total of $35,650 for each vehicle, in the West Memphis Police Department directives were approved and referred on to the city council meeting. This past Monday, we did have a police commission meeting. We really didn't have any new business. We didn't have any old business, but the police chief was here, and we were so very, very thankful for his presence, along with Queen Inspector being here and Officer Ford. Commissioner Bruce asked about Sky cops and also the Sky cop at the utility plant. We asked if it were working, because Mr. Parker, Lorenzo Parker, asked me to ask that question, because they had a tractor stolen from the plant, and there was no data on that Sky cop to indicate who may have taken it or anything of that nature. Chief Campbell also expressed his concern about the new law that was passed by the governor regarding Chinese manufacturing cameras that we should really be concerned about. There was a citizen here to complain against the police dog stretching his car. After much discussion, it was stated by Chief Campbell that the complaint has been investigated, and no police officers were found to be negligent in that matter. That end my reports.
Mayor. I would like to say that the last meeting was a great meeting, and it proved, as I stated before, our chief really needs to be here, because he was able to really answer some questions, and as far as that investigation that we needed desperately answered. And it was a great meeting, and look forward to having more meetings with him.
Thank you. He'll be at all of them.
He was a great asset to us at this meeting.
Thank you. Airport?
The airport commission report is that Susanna Cook with the Garber Industries, or engineers, reported that the Rebel Services will start on the jet fuel rehab on July the 12th. They will perform as much work as possible now, because the tank will not be delivered until the beginning of next year. It was brought to the attention of the commission that there was some spouting on the taxiway, and that will be taken care of and repaired with a state grant, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll move forward. A and P?
June 21st, excuse me, June 21st, 2023, A and P Commission met at 4:06 PM. The meetings were presented and accepted as presented. Financial reports were presented and accepted as presented, and we had one funding request for a Arkansas par-state awareness 5K for $3,000. It was approved unanimously. We added funding request guidelines would include post-event reports, so we would know where the money was spent and how it was spent. That was passed unanimously. And with no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 4:55 PM. End of report.
Thank you, Councilman Mary. I'm also gonna put it over to Counselor Kat to speak on the introduction of the manufactured housing.
Yes, it's been a standing item on our agenda through a ninety-day period for us to look at what our options are with manufactured housing. Each individual has been given a copy of a class I recently attended. If you would please take time to look through it, maybe we need to schedule a time for either a HUD representative, Fannie Mae representative to come in and talk about the advantages of this type of lending. I think it's very beneficial. I think it adds a benefit to the community, and it's a little bit more cost affordable than a regular stick-framed house, but I think it's a viable option for you to consider. Maybe we can meet, give you a chance a week or so to look at it, and then I'll try to get someone here.
All right, and also, we do have our planner. He's working on that study that we postponed for ninety days, so I guess by the end of the month, he will have a full, detailed plan for you all to look at, see what we're gonna do. And if you all don't know, I know we met last time, but it's short me, but that's Chad Bowman, that's our director of planning right there.
Mayor, can I ask one question?
Sure.
This introduction to manufactured housing, is that just prefabbed housing, or would that be considered like tiny housing that they manufacture and then bring them in and just set them up, or is that...
You basically have three different components. You have a manufactured house, a lot of people will call a mobile home.
Right.
You have manufactured housing, which was built off-site, brought to and erected on-site.
Right.
And then you got your traditional stick-frame construction that most people are accustomed to seeing. All three of them have advantages. It's just a matter of the right locations for each individual component, so...
Thank you.
Did I overlook any other committees? If not, can I go back up to permission requests? Can I get a motion in second to add charity days to the agenda?
So moved.
On a paper A?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna start with to my right side, Councilwoman Hutchinson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor McClendon. If I may, I want to request $250 to Creative Strategies Community Development.
Okay.
Creative Strategies Community Development, and then I guess I'll forward that, Ms. Patricia, I'll get that information, you know, to make certain that we're on the same page. Can I get a motion to...
Oh, let me, Councilwoman Kroom?
I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I would like to take what funds I have available and split it 50/50 between Creative Strategies Community Development Corporation and Families in Transition.
I do have, I'm not really sure how much I have, and I don't know how I'm to phrase the run-walk. What is that called, actually?
That's the creative strategy.
I'd like to donate $1,000 to that, and I'll give the rest of my donation at the next meeting when I find out exactly how much I have remaining.
$1,000 to the prostate cancer run-walk? Were there any...
But it's the creative stra, you know, that's the creative strategies.
Oh, creative.
Yes, sir. That's the same.
I'm looking here at this note, he doesn't give a particular name for it.
Right. Created. It's Creative Strategies Community Development for the prostate cancer walk. But the nonprofit is Creative Strategies Development.
Well, I'm gonna add another 500 to my money to Creative Strategies Run and Walk. Was there anyone else on this?
Have you noted, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. I have this so bad, I am so sorry. Ms. Patricia, have you notated? I wanted to, listen, Tori's not here.
Okay.
If I have, because I don't know where my balance is, from the 250, make it 5, and then we'll, like I said, we'll make certain that I have that to give. If not, we'll, I'll come back before the council. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
She has. I think, without a doubt, a couple of meetings ago, I think everybody got $1,028, so you have the $500 there to do that.
Oh, really? I've been out of the box. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
Counselor Kat, thank you for that.
Worse, there any other I want to give? Okay, with Councilwoman Hutchinson, Councilman Kroom, Councilwoman Mohammed, also the mayor. Can I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved. Second.
On a paper A?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, well, they have their come to Creative Strategies. We're gonna move back down to, I had no appointments, I had no presentations, I had some pure announcements. Anyone else have anything to add before I go?
I would, I would like to really thank, thank you, Mr. Don Willsen, for the beautiful article on Keep West Memphis Beautiful in the paper, and with the 25 to 30 volunteers that we had on that particular Saturday, everybody did such an awesome job. The fellowship and fun is always wonderful. I'd like to thank Councilman Kroom, Councilman David Murray for coming out and helping us along with all of the volunteers that we had. We had a few city employees as well who came out and helped. What's the gentleman's name? Is he sitting back there? Oh, there he is, you with the ponytail. Mr. Whiteside, he was just working all by himself, just on Marina Road, just doing such an awesome job. Thank you so very, very much. I know, I was getting ready to mention you, you're with me every single year, but I know you have something to do, and I was trying to come to your mom's event as well, but I just, my kids made me go home and rest after this was all over.
I understand, thank you.
But, and I was cramping even, thinking about you so very, very much.
Thank you.
And Patricia, I thought about you all while we were working. You were with me in spirit. As the preacher said, you're with me, your heart is here. So I just want to thank you all so very, very much, and we're looking forward to, I think there's one coming up in August, and it's not Keep West Memphis Beautiful, but this is something that we've been doing now for a whole lot of years, and we are so very, very thankful to all of our volunteers, and we look forward to doing it again, if not in the fall, again next year. Thank you, volunteers.
I thank you, Councilwoman Mohammed. Was there any other announcements? All right, I'll go ahead and start. First of all, I'm gonna ask you all to continue to keep the Hutchinson family in your prayers. With Councilwoman Hutchinson, lots of her mom, Ms. Hutchinson, everyone knew Ms. Hutchinson, she's a pillar in our community, so definitely keep that family in your prayers. Also, I know he's kind of a strong man, but he's kind of private, but I'm gonna ask you all to keep Councilor Kat and the Kat family in your prayers as well for the loss of his sister this Monday, they'll be funeralizing her, so definitely keep him in your prayers as well. Also, we have Officer Torres Harbaugh. I went to Baptist de Soto yesterday to see him, me and Nick did. He was the officer that we had had, I don't wanna call it a heat stroke, it's something dealing on that level. He's been in the hospital a little over a week now, and officers been going back and forth to see him, and we just found out once I had the meeting with the police department. So definitely, they let us know, so I definitely wanna go out and see him. Good young man. He just, I think that heat got so heavy on some of them, you know, and I think his body just went, I don't know if he had, was he dehydrated or what? Maybe been in the hospital a week, and he's still gonna be in the hospital, I'm thinking another week or two, so, you know, definitely wanna pray for him.
If I may, I had something to you, I appreciate your thoughts. I was, I've been told by quite a few people that it's having breathing issues right now. Just out of the blue, and then all of once it be cleared up, but it takes some time, it takes months.
Yeah, this heat's extreme, because I know a couple of days earlier, it was what, 115? It felt like 115, so that's a lot of heat that, you know, that our officers have to deal with, just to, you know, once again, like I said, to protect us and be the best protectors or warriors that we have, so just wanna keep him in your family, and also, not just him, but just the whole police department, especially when they out there in that type of weather, doing what they need to do.
I fire him too.
I fire him, just, our sanitation department.
Right.
You know, actually, we had a guy at the parks, I don't wanna call his name, you know, but he, he lost conscience at the Freedom Fest, out there in the heat, working for our parks, and you know, just everyone just in dangerous, you know, conditions, and it's so important for the people that may take it for granted, but they need to understand that our men and women, they do a valuable service in keeping us safe, so just keep them all in our prayers. I know Ms. Harris said it in the first in our prayers, so just keep everyone's comfort in your prayers.
I would like to say, Mrs. Melanie, your mom, every year she worked to clean up, every, from the very first in 2012 up until she wasn't able to do it anymore. She made sure she got her bags, her shirts, and went into the community, got her volunteers, her own volunteers, and worked, so I wanted to give her those.
Thank you. Also, okay, here goes some good updates, you know, something I'm very proud about. First of all, I'm proud to say that our Florida Department Training Center will soon be making a grand announcement on that, to do a grand opening, and definitely, before I move forward, I definitely wanna thank Councilor Kat for the move that he made and helping to get a crane that saved us, what, 80% of what we first had, so it's a big saving, so Councilor Kat, we thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm looking for the chief, chief aide, you all to give me on the date that we can set the announcement and give everyone out, and Councilwoman Mohammed, Councilwoman Monday, Councilwoman Kroom, y'all can slide down some poles, and in the far, while we are far around, you just have a little fun.
Right, I've been through that agility training.
Exactly. Oh, yes.
I have.
Yeah, well, you've been through it, but Councilman Widdes and Dr. Bruce, you can crawl in any little small spot, so it definitely be fun, but it gives you another insight on what, once again, what our men and women have to go through to make sure that we are safe in this community, so we're looking forward to that. My next announcement is, y'all not gonna believe this, but I'm gonna have to give a shout-out to Arda and our Senator Murdoch for the jobs he has done on having to announce that February, July 20th, that Rich Road Bridge will be in 90%, 90%. And you know, the 90% definitely just gonna go into after the bid, so we can start to get the construction there on the job, so I'm very happy at that, because this mayor, I know Ward 1 and Ward 3 council people, I know all of us, but we really have taken a major hit from Rich Road Bridge, but now it seems like we at the end of that journey, and now it's finally about to get repaired, so let the people know. Exactly, so July 20th, it'll be in 90 percentile, so I never knew why it took that long to do a bridge, but golly, we have learned everything about it, so definitely, it's getting ready to be taken care of. Also, the Dr. Molotov King Boulevard areas is about to start to get overlaid as well, and that's the part that's going around like the Hofia area, so they getting ready to start on it as well, and they have already started off, the service roads, I got some pictures of simple scenes, they overlaying, re-stripping, and these are our service roads, these coming on Dr. King, Ingle Boulevard, so areas like that, so they are doing a decent job trying to work with us as best as they can, but we just happen to see the park is going on. I know the people of West Memphis is gonna, really be appreciative, but I know next week, Missouri Street and Broadway Street start with the repaving and the striping of the street, so I know it's gonna make a lot of citizens very happy, so I'm gonna thank them on that. Okay, our parks, I know you all have seen what's going on on 14th Street. Actually, what they doing now is doing a tree protection plan, and some of you all may see the, how you seen when the dirt was pouring, and like you jump up there and grab the electrical line? Those lines are getting ready to be placed up under the ground, so that we'll be moved, and those trees, I wish Lorenzo was here, but he probably can explain to you what you mean with the tree protection, but actually, they making sure they covering it up, so we can make sure that we don't lose no more trees in that area, so that's on that. Taylor Rogers Land, that will be here next week to, for us to start to meet on what we can, what the dollar amount's gonna look like, to start to look, to move forward, or if you all desire, at least know what we have to spend and what we gonna, and what will be the cost to move forward to the Rogers Park, so that would be good. That's for the parks. We got a... We got a very good planning meeting coming up, I've been looking forward to it, and I'm just gonna tell you all that we got some restaurants in this planning, this planning commission meeting, as well as hotels, housing, a pub, a playing unit development that's coming up, so we got a lot of things going on, so I don't know when the planning meeting, it's not something you all wanna come to, but definitely. You probably wanna stick your head in and just hear about some of the great things that we got going on.
And when is it ma'am, what day is it?
You will ask me that that way.
I'll find that.
Yeah, the last, the last Wednesday of, of the month, so, at four o'clock.
He moved it, I thought he made it three.
Be here at three.
Okay, yeah, be here early.
Yeah, be early, so.
What day is it?
The last Wednesday, last Wednesday. Also, and I guess this, this is my last announcement, is that, you know, for the longest, I've pretty much been talking about cutting your yards, and honestly, are we where we wanna be, no, but this year, getting lawns cut here in the city of West Memphis has been far more better than it has been in a long time. We have been doing some things that I implemented this year, where we've been spraying a lot of these lawns that's by themselves, not against someone's property, tell me the one that's property, but we've been, been spraying them, and I know if you have noticed on Mayfair, it has been longer without us having to cut it. So a lot of good things has been going on with that as well, as we're gonna get back in the bios, but we only have one vehicle to do that, and actually, the young gentleman that was doing with the utility department, he lost his daughter, so that, that's a tough situation, you know, we just got a lot of stuff going on, people have personal issues too, so. Well, hopefully, we'll get some of those things back going up, so that's been great, how the people have been taking initiative to make sure that they can get out and cut their yards and clean up. And we, we started talking about cleaning up our community, you know, it's important for, you know, the sanitation job is not to get out in the middle of the street to pick up, you know, bags and stuff in the street. So we asking those individuals, don't throw bags at your car, take them to a garbage can where you can fill them in and, 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 and try and work with us to keep making the city better, because they're gonna take the citizens as well, as our sanitation department, I think they are doing an excellent job. I got with Director Montgomery, Ms. Robbie, Amos, as well as Ms. Paulina today, and we doing something a little different that I had came, some came across my mind. I wanted to know, for us commercial, how do we stack up against the rest of the commercial people? So actually, what we doing, Nick is working on a link that's gonna go on our city page, as well as all, but only our commercial customers. We gonna send a letter out, and we hoping that some may go online and fill out the, the survey, or we send it back in. But I wanna know, from one to five commercial, how we stack up being, one is the worst, five is the best, I wanna know. As well as, we had several new people that want our service, with Chick-fil-A, all some different people like that have reached out to the city. As well as, we got a new schedule that we gonna be doing at the, not new schedule, that will affect the customer from Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we gonna have a truck that gonna be out. So if you see a front end loader out on Saturdays, it's by design. Actually, also, we gonna have another truck that's gonna be out from two in the evening to ten o'clock at night. We have got, Mr. Montgomery said that he want more than less, so what we're gonna do, we got enough people that's gonna, we can strategize the way we pick up. So we just gonna be picking up two months, two Fridays, or, or they get off at two o'clock, and something is left at three o'clock, and no one can get it, then you gotta work till the weekend. So we coming up with new ways that we can get that, and also, in the survey, you just wanna hear from the customer, how can we do some things better? Or also, Mr. Montgomery gonna be going to business and send down with them saying, how can we do better with you, or how can we bring you on as a customer? Because with, is it, what's the other two?
Waste management.
Republican, they are so much higher than us, and if you're a person like me that's concerned about money, there's no way in the world you should be using someone outside of West Memphis. But if West Memphis is not giving you the service that you need, then I will understand why you would be going to the places. So right now, we getting that together, we starting with a commercial service, and once we get that up and going, we definitely gonna start with the grapple, grapple service, and trying to educate the peoples of what we can and what we can't pick up, and there's some backyard service, residential, so just trying to do some things like that to definitely get better, so. I hope all this work, I think it's going in a great direction, we got more drivers, we not down, so that's gonna be good, having more drivers. Someone had to call off, 'cause they wanna have, have vacation time, sick time that they have to take. So definitely, that is good, that we gonna have that extra driver. And Mr. Montgomery, right now, and this is something I've, I've been pushing for the last couple of years, but I finally got someone there that can push. Every CDL driver down there, if you can drive a grapple truck, you gonna drive a front end loader, if you can drive a rear end loader, you gonna drive a grapple truck. He making sure everybody better drive, better drive everything. So if someone is missing from front end loaders, and you drive rear end loaders normally, you gonna be the jump in that truck and drive. So it ain't gonna be no more excuse why we can't do what we need to do, so definitely, in our litter department, they gonna be going out, make sure they pick up trash around the garbage cans, as well as informing the people who own those commercial dumpsters, make sure that stuff's in there, and, you know, like, I'm gonna use Jim for an example. In his garbage can, there was a, a love seat in there. Is there a love seat at the civic center? No, so I wanna encourage our people to not just start doing these things and random dumpsters, because the people have to suffer. Ms. Robert have to come in and get those things out, and they kinda hold up a little time, so, you know, I wish it was an issue, I talked to him about it, and, and something may gonna ask you guys about. If we had a couple of big dumpsters that be on, now, I'm fantasizing now, and I'm just asking, if you all was to buy me four of these dumpsters, three of these dumpsters, and we just have a central location for each one of them, where someone did, because what's happening is, if you got all this furniture, you throwing it out anyway. Ms. Muhammad called me the other day on Sula Lane, about, they throwing it out anyway, and guess who happened to go back and get it?
They're doing it. We are, 'cause we have.
We see you gotta get it anyway, yeah, so, I mean, I don't wanna get into customing having to do that, but if, in some situation, if we can find a, a place where we can just place them, because we do have a truck that can move, that just may be an idea that you all may say, well, hey, let's try to make happen, if we can make it.
I think, Mayor McLean, and I, I do applaud all of your efforts, and I think you're doing a really wonderful job. All I'm hearing out there in my community from people calling, sharing with me is the accolades of, of how the houses and things are being torn down. I really do appreciate you getting all of that stuff on Sula Lane, because they kept calling me, so I had to do something about it, call you.
Exactly.
The only, the only concern I have with putting those roll offs in certain spots, like we do during the cleanup, you're gonna have the contractors.
Exactly.
Dumping all of their construction and tires and things of that nature, I guess that's something that we just can't stop. We're putting it out there for our community, but that's, that would just be my only concern, and I, I don't know how you would stop that.
I mean, that's, that's a great concern, 'cause I would wonder how, how, how could we stop, or even, or would it even be worth it if we just gonna give the contractors a free place to dump when, you know, they have a, you know, what do you think, Senator?
Well, I think it's a good idea, but I think I, I agree that the contractors would cause a problem. Anytime, I mean, look, anytime there's a place to dump, people are gonna dump it, and whether it's their trash container or somebody else's, I, I think councilperson Cat has had that experience in, in a lot of their dumpsters, and, but I think it's a great idea to try to get rid of the trash, there's no question about that. I just, I, I don't know how you could prevent that from happening without, people don't pay attention to signs that you put out either, that say, don't dump these certain types of things, and you're like tires, they won't pay attention to that. So that won't stop it, I mean, the only thing to do is try to put a camera on it, I guess, and if there was some illegal dumping, then possibly do something, but it doesn't really work very well.
Well, well, Mayor, what I, I guess what I would like to say is, is basically, if you out there and you have something that needs to be picked up, please call and talk to the people that are doing it, or call the city hall. We do understand that everybody may not have, and I know we have something in place where you are charged, but just please call and talk to us, so we can try and get something worked out for you, which would help us keep our city clean. I, I got a question too, Mayor, about the parks. Now, didn't we have something where there's supposed to be some splash pads, or?
Yes, splash pads gonna be, we gonna be a big splash pack in Taylor Rogers, and we got two smaller ones in Franklin and Worthington Park.
Okay, and I guess I kinda wanna just put this out there, you know, there are, I know pools are very expensive, but sometimes we have to collaborate, and I'm gonna put this out there. City of West Memphis, ASU Mid-South, West Memphis School District, that's something we need to think about collaborating, to try to bring a pool here to West Memphis. Collaboration would be great, you know, one entity wouldn't have to be responsible for it all, but we could collaborate and bring something here to this city that would be great for all of our constituents, because sooner or later, one day, and I'm hearing the state is saying something about schools having to be able to provide swimming lessons or something like that, that's being discussed, but sometimes we have to collaborate to get things done. And I think that's something that really, hopefully, we can start that conversation.
Well, you know me, I, I definitely agree with you one million percent, because I mean, I brought the water park, I, I talked about the Blue Devil Swim Team, and I talked about the Marion Patriots Swim Team, and, and just the swim teams around here, so I definitely believe every child needs to be able to swim, so I'm, I'm on board with you on that. Definitely, we do collaboration, come up with some other funds, we better get it there, so.
Also, Mayor, can, one other thing, if I'm allowed?
Go ahead.
Speed bumps, are we still doing those?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking at them, yes ma'am.
You know what I'm?
Yeah, I, I know, yes, so, also, Ms. Hutchinson?
Just one, since we're only talking about the children, Chief May, I may, I have to give you, just thank you, I hadn't been able to talk with you personally, for the prom promise, the awesome job you did. It takes a lot of work, and with the collaborative, of collaboration of the other departments, thank you, awesome job, thank you so much.
I got two more quick announcements. You know, I've been having a lot of conversations with some, some of your councilmen, I haven't been able to do it with all of you all, but I, I've been meeting with Ms. Tori and Ms. Janice Coleman about some different things, how could I give the employees more money here in the city without you all having to come up with more money? And one of the things we've been looking for, like, we met with police and fire representation, but we working with non-uniform, you know? We put six percent into a retirement plan, correct? Now, for me, I want my six percent, because I mean, I'm invested, and I'm sure that some of the employers that have that time are investing. But, you know, realistically, we have people that've been here two years, they probably ain't gonna be with us another, another three years. So if they're not caring about their retirement, why would I continue to take your, our money and invest six percent into them in retirement, when I can say, well, hey, do you want the five percent? If they ever take the five percent, why not give it to them? Save us one percent, and five percent go on to them, and they'll make more money at that time. Or we were looking at insurance tiers. You know, first of all, if a husband and wife, just say, using it for example, if their wife able to pay the insurance for the family, why do I need to just pay their insurance for that one individual? I'd rather just give him that twenty-six dollars a pay period as an incentive for not taking it, because think about this, if we are paying for a single person, they are paying fifty-two dollars a, a month for insurance, right? How much you think we paying? Six hundred and forty dollars a month. So we ain't got to pay that, okay, let, let's go on family. You know how much family, was it four, is it four forty-one?
Oh, it's expensive, it's more than that.
Well, yeah, so, no, that's what they, the employees pay. Yeah, I, I should, what is it, twenty-two hundred?
Uh, Prime Member credit's like fourteen hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Exactly, exactly, so that's what we paying, so if they, if they decide they want to do something a little better, I'd rather pay that than incentivize them not to, and that saves the city, what'd you say, fourteen hundreds of dollars? Exactly, okay, you looking, say, sick time versus PTO. Now, that gonna be a, a kinda stickler, because you know, you got the, the individuals that have been here for twenty years, got a lot more sick time, but you, you think about it. There's so many people miss work, 'cause guess what, they got so much sick time, so much vacation time, I mean, golly, and then with all the holiday time that you give people off, I mean, who working? No, I, I know I'm gonna get bit on this, so, but I'm just, I, I just gotta be honest with you all, you all know what, what we dealing with, so there's some things that you all may wanna take on consideration, to save the city the money that needs to be saved. And definitely, I'm gonna call you all in on that more, we'll give personnel just to run through some of these things, some of these ideas that we got, just to see what you all feel like. 'Cause you all may have a better idea, I know Councilman Cat have brought, I mean, several ideas of how we possible, you know, could look at doing some things differently, so. Once we everything together, I wanna be able to share it with the whole team, and see what you all think. And lastly, I wanna send a big shout out to our students that's working for the Mayor's Summer Job Program, they are doing a great job, I want y'all to give them a hand. I think our fire department, the young men and women down there is doing well. Ms. Patricia, yo, yo two, she, she got, yo two, she, that, that's Ms. Patricia Junior right there, so she, she, she's doing a great job. I mean, all of our police department, as well, even my person, Ms. Sharon Emily Booker, she's a Saturday student, so she's doing a great job, so just all the children's coming out, and we had a, we had an exercise last Friday where Truist Bank came in and showed them, what, what's the name of the program? How Do We Live? How Do We Live, and what it did, they, I'm just gonna use this example, gave them ten dollars, just throwing it out, but that ten dollars, your rent was two dollars, your gay, your new car was a dollar, the gross rent in your house was fifty cents, your funds, your position, your life bill was a dollar twenty-five, and actually, they had to come up with ways of how they can budget their money, how it's gonna make them better, how credit, misusing credit during this, how it's gonna help them, so. There was some great exercises they gave, so I just wanna definitely commend the young men and women who's coming out, getting this valuable information. When we first started this program, we started this program to help our kids and be able to make more money, to helpfully keep them out of trouble. But right now, this has truly turned into a, a program that's going to make our young people very productive citizens in West Memphis, so I just thanking for that. I had no citizen requests, let me make sure I got all my things out. If no one having anything, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, bye. Oppose?